Students that are on the shooting team. And we had the sixth graders through Gareup, and I'm sure Francine will talk more about it. Sixth grade students went to Western Carolina University for some STEM activities. Is that correct Francine? And our STEM classes are doing a wonderful job. The kids are enjoying those classes. I don't know if you follow the middle school Facebook page. But they had an egg drop project last week. They have spent some time doing a project on how to clean up oil spills and what effect oil spills have on the environment. Our seventh grade reading class, they have been reading The Giver and doing lots of activities around that and lots of discussions. And the kids have really enjoyed that book and all the projects around that. And the middle school is having a fundraiser. Shannon Knott is heading it up for a 5K on May 13th. Registration will start at 8:30, so if anybody would like to come or run or walk with us, we'd love to have you. And our math classes, they're working on trying to make sure they cover all the standards in time for EOGs and doing a great job. Crystal Watt is just working herself really hard at the middle school and we're very thankful to have her. And eighth grade students left for their trip yesterday morning. They spent yesterday, they went to Appalachian State University and toured and had lunch on campus and then stopped in Greensboro at the Greensboro Science Center. They enjoyed that and then they made the long trip onto the coast. And of course today they've got a very busy day and they will be back on Friday. So they're seeing lots of sights. And through Gareup at the beginning of the year, we had a project where they built roller coasters. It was a STEM project and the kids enjoyed that. So Thursday night they are going to Carolins. So they'll get to do some, a Carolins, kind of a fun trip on the way, on their way back home. So we're looking forward to hear all about their trip and we'll be posting pictures on our Facebook page.
How many students got to go?
Thirty-seven students ended up going. So the kids that, a group of the kids that did not go, we have taken them today. They're gone to Cherokee, or to Murphy to bowl and have pizza. So we're trying to, they spent yesterday doing lots of STEM activities and so we're trying to make sure that they are having some fun too, so.
Thank you. Jane?
Our fifth graders leave on their Charleston trip tomorrow. So they're excited. I've got a call from along that her child's been packed now for over a week. So we've got some people who are very, very excited to be going with their friends and we've just been working on some preparation for those things, getting meal orders and things that are coming in from the, from the company so that we can have all that stuff ready to go. But everyone's excited. Today at the elementary school, the high school EC program has set up in the art classroom, the coffee shop that you have at the high school. And the Sunshine Committee has gotten all those students to come over and they're actually treating all the Robbinsville Elementary School staff to a nice coffee today. So we're all really enjoying that and it's nice to see those kids in much bigger bodies that we knew from the time that they were with us in kindergarten. So we've really enjoyed that today and we've done an excellent job. At the elementary school, we finished up the last week of March. Our Rock and Read program had a really good turnout for Parent Night. And for those of you who may or may not be familiar with it, it's through our Title One program. And it coincides with our students living in poverty. And what we know from research is students living in poverty tend to be more educationally disadvantaged with having literature in their home. They have fewer books in the home than students from more affluent families that can afford literature in the home. So that whole program is to, we give books to students through the week as they come in to Rock and Read. And then at Parent Night, we give more books. So it's to get books in the hands of families and books in the home for children to have at their leisure. So we had a really good turnout for that. And when we get back from spring break, we're going to start our EOG Academy. And in third, fourth, and fifth grade, a couple afternoons a week, we have teachers who are going to stay to offer test taking strategies and supports and things like that to help students who can participate begin to work toward it. Not that we're not going to be doing that year of the school day, but this is just an extra opportunity for preparation for the EOG. To give students a little bit of incentive for the EOG to want to try their best. ATOA Contracting, Styles Body Shop, and Crisp &amp; Crisp Construction have donated enough money for me to purchase a PS5 for every grade level. And every child in every grade level has an opportunity to get their name in the drawing for the PS5 for their grade level. The way that children get their name in the drawing is if you attend every day that you attend the EOG Academy, so you're working to try to be as prepared for the test as you can. Every day that you attend the EOG Academy, you get to put your name in the drawing. You get a ticket for your name. Once we get our EOG scores in, if you through the EBOSS system have met what the state says you should have met with the year for your student growth, you get to add, and this is per subject, you get to add a ticket, your name on a ticket for meeting your growth. That has nothing to do with whether you make a three, four, or five, but you've met your growth that the state said that you should have met for the year. If you exceed your growth, you get to put your name in twice. If you make a three, four, or five on the EOG, you get to add three, four, or five tickets to the drawing. So this is the way that we're giving every child an opportunity to have their name in the drawing. And if you have a hard test day and you just struggle, as long as you have attended some EOG Academy days and done your best to try to prepare yourself for the test, you can still have your name in the drawing. So we're appreciative to these wonderful community donors for giving us this opportunity. The kids seem to be really excited about it. But it's to give them something to look, you know, no one wants to sit down and take that test. That is no fun. And so it's, you know, something to get them excited about having an opportunity. And we've tried to set it up so that every kid has that opportunity to get their name in the drawing. So that's what we have going on at the elementary school.
Thank you. David?
So just got three or four things. We have gotten back our ACT scores from the juniors that took the test again in March. Just going to be completely honest with the board, I'm not real pleased with our scores. Since COVID, our scores have dropped below the state average. We have always been either at or above the state average. The last two years, our ACT scores have just not been up to par, to be honest with you. So we're working on a plan to try to address that going into the school year next year and try to get the scores. Because at some point in time, we can't blame it on COVID anymore. I mean, we have a responsibility to get those kids caught back up to where they need to be. Some good news, Ms. Williams, Megan Williams, our entrepreneurship one class competed in a smart tank competition at Southwestern Community College last week. It was just a spinoff of like Shark Tank. And her class went and they give a pitch on a business and they won the high school division and won $300 for their business that they're going to be starting. And it's called Knights of Parent. And her class will be selling a lot of things, but one of the things they'll be selling is white knight apparel to the students, faculty, parents, the community. They're going to set up ball games, different places like that. And they make all this stuff. It can be customized, so it can be, you place your order and get something from Knights of Parent. We're excited about that, Ms. Williams. We're currently working on a new room for her and there's going to actually be a business entrance to that room. So we're very excited about that and that's just such a really good city department's been able to do. We also last week took 41 kids to construction career day up at Haywood County at Fairgrounds. And there were literally hundreds of businesses set up up there and the kids got to go through and the tables had stuff they were giving away. They had heavy equipment everywhere outside. The kids got to get on that stuff and operate it. And it was just a really good day for the kids. They enjoyed it a lot. We've partnered with RISA as one of two counties in, actually, yeah, two, no, three counties in western North Carolina that are going to be taking part in reading apprenticeship. And I've been working with April Spencer on that. All of our English, social studies, and science teachers in the high schools will be going through a two-year professional development to promote literacy in the classroom. So that's getting started in the next month or so. And then they'll have a summer workshop in August. Hopefully that will also be part of what helps our ACT scores. At least that's what we're thinking. Also this past week, I was able to take part in a presentation on ScholarPath. That's something that the state legislature has funded for every school system in the state. And we're going to be part of the first plate that's going to be adopting ScholarPath into the school. And what it does is it gives us a platform to set up four-year plans for kids. It gives parents a way to log on and pull an unofficial transcript of their child at any time. And eventually it will, it will be able to merge with Power School and we'll be able to use ScholarPath to do our scheduling for the kids. So they sign up for their classes and automatically brings them over. So it saves a lot of time and we don't have to keep those in individually. So it's going to be a real good thing for our school. As far as our seniors go, found out last week that Lindsey Britton and Montana Adams, both have been awarded the prestigious Hayden Scholarship. So very excited for those two young ladies, very well deserved for them. And athletically softball team's doing great. They've got two losses, both to Inca who's ranked, I think, second or third in 3A. And baseball teams won three games in a row. Golf teams won a couple matches. And both track teams are just doing fantastic. And most of all, we are ready for spring break.
Amen.
Mr. Davis?
I didn't know. Oh, glad you brought that up. So there was an article in the Graham Star this, I believe that was ago. Mr. Davis, one of our science teachers, he had applied for a CASA award through the Burroughs Welcome Fund. And he was granted this award. Actually, we found out and they came out and presented it personally at Robbinsville High School. It was really good. And it's worth about, I think, about $175,000 for Grand County Schools. And it's going to touch kids from fourth grade through 12th grade. So very excited about that. Mr. Davis does a fantastic job in the high school. He does a whole lot outside of the classroom to bring science and STEM activities to kids throughout the school system. And I appreciate him very much. Thanks, Mr. Davis.
Pretty much my assignment's that. We probably get a lot more than you all there.
Do you have any questions?
Good morning. Yes, good morning. I have some data to present to you. In your packet here, you'll see data from countless nurses and social workers. You can see that March has been a very busy month. I believe this will be the end of the conference as well. I'll give you just a minute to review through that to see if you have any questions for I think that you can continue to see that we are having students show up in offices for individual counseling and there are still some crisis situations that continue to arise. I also want to call to your attention, I don't want to be too hasty and not give you enough time to look at your data, but in your presence today, we have Ms. Toni Lawler. She is our intern from Western Carolina University. And Ms. Knott, you may sort of help me here if I'm saying anything incorrectly, but to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had a social work intern from Western Carolina or any other university that I can remember.
Not from my knowledge.
So this is groundbreaking for our school system. Ms. Toni has traveled from Western Carolina, from the Silva area, three days a week for an entire school year. She's a master's level social worker. We are fortunate to have her in our school system as an intern. And I will give this separately if you want to spot. But I would like for you ladies to give a testament of how beneficial this has been. We would love to continue to be able to partner with Western Carolina with them in the future so that they will send us, you know, students in training. But I did want to recognize Ms. Toni today to thank her for her amazing work. We have always known we needed more assistance in health and mental health and we needed people who were trained with good skills and we got it this year. We have been more than blessed with Ms. Toni, so thank you.
Yes, and she's been very helpful at the elementary school. She's went in and taught some activity classes, keys to success for some of our students. She has worked with some small group behavioral modification type support. She's met with us with parents to try to help us explain, you know, when students are struggling and different things that can be done at home and at school to try to help the students. She's just been very instrumental and a wonderful addition to the elementary school staff for this year. We've really appreciated her. And she's been faithful, driving back and forth from Silva with no stopping for gas or anything like that, just doing an internship when she could have done it closer to where she lives and not have had, put herself out to do that. She chose to come to us and has continued to do that and stay with us. And it's so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toni. Francine?
Sorry for the voice. So Gareup's been very busy, very busy. In the middle school and high school, for, for the middle school, we ended up being able to pay $6,200 towards the bus for the eighth grade trip. We were so glad for that to be approved. We've taken the sixth grade to Western. They were very excited to go to a four-year college. It's really hard to get four-year colleges and universities to allow middle school students to go. But, but Western has agreed and they thought they were all the stuff, even the cafeteria, going on a tour through admissions and doing a couple STEM adventures as well. On April 24th, we're going to take the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade STEM classes and the STEM club, the App State, to go to a convocation of STEM for a full day. We'll leave about six, 6:30 in the morning and head up there, get there at 10:00. It's there until 12:00. We'll eat lunch there and turn around and come back. But it's not an overnight trip. I do have field trips on there. Do you want me to cover it now?
We have a place for field trips.
Okay, I saw that, just didn't know. In the high school, Gareup has partnered with My Future NC, which is for a FASPA pilot. And we've been having meetings with Tracy Metz on how to improve our FASPA numbers. We have incentives that we're getting ready to offer to the students. I've mentioned it before, but we have several raffles going, one for prom tickets and one for AirPods. And then for the parents, they're also in the raffle if they fill out their FASPA for a graduation packet to be paid for tapping down and all the necessities that they would need for that. Our summer activities are being planned for high school and middle school. I've already been contacting teachers, seeing what subject they may want to teach and when. So that's on a roll and I just need to get all that justified pretty soon. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Myra, you have anything for us?
No, tell them all that you're going along real good, Myra.
Very good. Kevin?
Hi, just real quick, last month we've probably have the testing as far as ACTs finishing up, we had access testing and the second round of check-ins. This next month is getting ready to get really crazy. Within five weeks, we'll be starting EOGs. And so my time's going to get really, really busy here the next little while. But we've still got the third round of check-ins to go and preparations for the EOGs and the EOCs, which will start, what, May 15th? Is that right? Anyway, world testing is getting really great and up and getting busy.
Dr. Do you have any school safety things for us?
That's right.
Okay. All right, now field trips. Now?
Now?
Francine?
I've put copies at each one of the places. Gareup, App State, what is paying for actual trips, but there are two, one in the week of June 26th and June 27th, sorry, and one in the week of July 10th. We are allowed to bring eight students on the bus trip. We will be sharing those with Clay County, Swang, Madison, and Yancey Counties. Okay, so I'm getting ready to go in and ask the students who would be interested in going on this college trip. We will have to, while we're working on getting buses to where we can all meet somewhere. They said they would send a bus to us, a charter bus, but not probably to each individual school, maybe us to meet in Swang and the other people to meet in Nashville to go. But because it's overnight trips, I needed to bring it to you as a board to okay those two bus trips.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the field trip, the summer college bus tour tentative itinerary with Clay, Yancey, Madison, and Grand County Schools on Tuesday, June 27th, Wednesday, June 28th, and Thursday, June 29th. And Monday, July 10th, Tuesday, July 11th, Wednesday, July 12th, and Thursday, July 13th. Do I have a motion to approve this summer college bus tour tentative itinerary?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Kate, I did not skip you on purpose. Any opposed?
I'll start with Title One. Ms. Hipper has mentioned, we had a very successful event with Rock and Read, which is sponsored by Title One. And she's also mentioned the EOG Academy, which has also helped them with funding of that. Moving on to exceptional children, a lot of great things are happening with exceptional children. I would like to do an additional shout out to that EC occupational business at the high school. It is really doing a fantastic job. A lot of good things are going over there with the coffee shop as well, including La Chama Lambert is over there, working with his children over there. And they were actually at an event this weekend and said that they've got a lot of great things, a lot of great products that they're selling and moving. So very excited about the hard work that's happening over there with the occupational course of study program. And exceptional children, we're having a lot of PD lately with, we're diving into autism, trying to get a better knowledge of that as we have more and more students coming up and feeding it through our schools, through preschool on that with autism. We're seeing more and more students in very high need. I want to invite all of you, April 28th. We're calling it Exceptional Children's Field Day. It will be very similar to Special Olympics. We will be having competition events for all of our students, for our, not just our schools, but the county as well. A lot of fun activities going on that day to where we've got some, you know, local volunteers. We were not able to host Special Olympics regionally this year because there was a lack of coordinators along the other districts that we normally work with. So thanks to our Grand County local government, they were willing to fund this day for our students and our athletes in this county to have a day of their own. So you're invited to attend that April 28th field with the high school. We're also having an event for preschool this year on May the 9th. Be welcome to attend that too. It'll be at the Robbinsville Elementary Football Field. So, and I also would like to mention that applications are now being taken for preschool slots for next school year.
Okay, thank you. Did I miss anybody?
I've got more, I've got field trips.
Oh, okay. Field trips, Ms. Lawrence. There you go.
Okay, the first field trip is for Renee Cable's exceptional children's class. This is a self-contained classroom and they were requesting to go to Ripley's Aquarium of the Smokies in Galveston on May the 3rd. This trip is for seven students. There will be three chaperones. And the trip has been made possible by the Joel Crisp Memorial Fundraiser, which Joel Crisp is a former self-contained student at Robbinsville High School. And they've been doing some things in his honor and his mother has asked to be able to pay for this trip with those fundraisers. So a real good trip for these kids. So I ask that that get approved. The next one is for our Spanish Club. Ms. Coral Jones is the sponsor for it. This will involve several students, not exactly sure how many, but the field trip is on, Spanish Club, the field trip is on April the 7th to Dollywood. And this is for the Educational Flower Festival at Dollywood. This is kind of an annual trip that Ms. Jones does with our Spanish Club every year. So that will be at the end of this week, everybody going down there. The next field trip is for Miranda Buchanan's yearbook class. And this would be for 15 to 20 kids to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. And this is, this is kind of to celebrate the completion of the yearbook. And they do this every year, but this year they want to go to the Jump Art, Texas Run House for lunch, and the Tanger Alley. And that is on April the 20th. Okay, so that's a celebration for finishing the yearbook. The last field trip would take place, it would leave on Wednesday, May the 31st and return on Friday, June the 2nd. This is for the RHS softball team and they will be taking Cherokee Boys Club bus if they can raise the money. Plan B would be to drive an activity bus, but they would like to go to Oklahoma City and watch the Division One Women's College World Series softball. So that is a really good trip for our team to go on. And the chaperones will be Billy and Jelann and Michael, Kylie Schuler, and Toby White.
What do you say?
That is May the 31st through June the 2nd.
That's enough.
So it's the week, it's the week after graduation is what they would be completing. And that's all, I have four.
Do we take these ones at the time or all? Can we take them all at once?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the Renee Cable, her class to go to Ripley's on May 3rd. Ms. Jones's Spanish Club on April 7th to Dollywood. Miranda Buchanan's yearbook team going to Pigeon Forge on April 20th. And the Robbinsville softball team going to Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, May 31st through June 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve these four field trips? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Is that all the field trips? Very good. Okay, Mr. Green, budget amendments. Now a word from our sponsor.
Okay, I've given you two packets. First packet will be the budget amendments and they're only two pages. Both of these pages are budget amendments for the state public school fund. First section, it's a budget amendment here for PRC 56. This is transportation. We received an additional allotment there of $124,554. And as you can see, that's spread out pretty evenly over several different budget codes. We've got equipment, bus driver's salary, bus driver overtime, supplies, repair parts, and fuel. And the next section now is a budget amendment for PRC 001 classroom teachers. We received an additional $1,332 and plan to use that for teacher salaries. Next section now is also a budget amendment for PRC 56 transportation. We received an additional $18,771. And that's a budget amendment where part of other construction, also the transportation division there, realized that the fuel costs have increased significantly. So they have developed a average cost per gallon and any, any rate above that that we paid for for July through January, they'll refund us that. So that is added to our transportation budget for those additional fuel costs. Next section now, this is a budget amendment for PRC
Next section now, this is a budget amendment for PRC one-thirty and one-thirty-one, both of these pots of money are for textbooks. PRC one-thirty is state textbooks, and those are textbooks that we traditionally would request from the warehouse, we rarely make those requests now, but our funding for textbooks comes through that PRC. To purchase the textbooks that we need, we have to purchase those through PRC one-thirty-one, which is other textbooks. So, this is simply an AEC transfer to move eighteen hundred dollars out of state textbooks into other textbooks so that we can make those purchases. The next page is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a budget amendment for the state public school fund. This is for PRC sixteen, summer reading camps, and Miss Nigel will remember last month, we have a budget amendment where they pull some of those funds back for summer skill. Well, I've mentioned also that they've given you a lot, this is a new allotment for summer skill. So, that allotment is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-two, and that is for summer reading camps at the elementary school, and most of that is budgeted for salaries for summer contracts and matching benefits. Those are all budget amendments I have this, just now. Any questions? I've also given you a packet which is eight and a half by fourteen, which is the expenditure reports. Again, the first page, these are just expenditures for the month of March for every fund, and if you go to the bottom row, you'll see the total expenditure for the month of March for each fund, and I might go over those, but I will go over, on the second page, these are expenditures for July through March. And I'll mention whether we're over or under budget for each fund, and that'll be in the last, at the bottom row. The local current expense fund, we're over budget by forty-six percent. That is misleading, we've made some expenditures out of that fund that we expect to get reimbursements for. At the end of the year, in all of these funds, there will be no overages because statutorily we can't have an overage, we can't be over budget any fund. So, this will, this will be real clean by the end of this school year. Next column, over fund eight, this is the fund where we account for our grants, individual grants, we're under budget by eight percent. State public school fund, the next column, we're over budget by six percent, which will clean that up and move some expenditures and some salaries before the end of the year. The federal fund, we're under budget by twenty-eight percent. Child nutrition, we're under budget by seventeen percent, and capital light labor, we're under budget by sixty-five percent. In the last page, this is a report for our individual grants that we account for in fund eight, so you'll see those listed. You'll have the month, the date expenditures for March, the year, the date expenditures, and also the total budget for each one of those grants. Any questions about?
And this is all used in when we're under point stage for state.
Over budget, over budget, forty-six percent.
Do you have that from the count?
Some of that will be coming back through the lottery funds because we made expenditures for the sixth grade wing out of our local account, and I've submitted one reimbursement request, we got that approved this morning, and we've got one more request to submit, and the project for the sixth grade wing will be completed. Committed.
Yeah, and the local one gives us so much money, but some of the local money comes from other sources, right?
Yes.
Now, now, of course, Mr. Green? For this section on the agenda, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now, Mr. Green, resolution and opposition to HP two nineteen.
I think Ms. Knight and I will be looking together on this, but do you want me to give a background on how we currently fund charter schools?
You'll find another copy of this in your packet, please.
Currently, we do have some students that go to a charter school in our neighboring county, and we do have some students that attend virtual academies. The funding source that charter schools have access to is only in Fund Two, where we receive our funding from the county, and also fines and forfeiture from the charter superior court. That's a little over a million dollars. We pay approximately seven hundred and ninety dollars per student per year. There's a cap on what you can send to the charter schools. This, this new House Bill two nineteen will give access to those charter schools to pull from all of our funds. My most, biggest concern was in Fund Eight where we account for our individual grants. There are eight to ten, and you see that on your back page, there are those grants, they would have the right to pull from those grants, and those grants are not intended, their purpose specific for their uses, and in my opinion, those, those funds should not be filtered to charter schools, but that's what this bill is setting.
But if they're filtered to the charter schools, do they have to use the money for what the grant says?
Yeah. It's very open ended, so, so, for one example, like on number three, pre-k classroom funds, we receive those funds per child based on attendance, but we would have to share those funds in a prorated way with charter schools. We don't have any, there's no, there will be no child, you know, without attendance, so there's no way to monitor for that, I really don't know how that would happen, but, but for instance, like Twenty-First Century, that's our after-school and summer school programs, and we're accountable per child for outcomes for that, so my students have to attend so many sessions of after-school for us to be able to count them, to receive the reimbursement for that. If we were, we'd have to ship that out of the county or wherever. We have no accountability measures for that, so I really don't understand how that's going to work with how we're going to, upon our end of our grant accountabilities. My recommendation is, and very much, actually, this was on the yellow West, the yellow West Department, if you watch the news.
I read that.
And just about every public school district in the state is signing this resolution that opposed having to share it with charter schools, they get their own money, and they get some of our money already, per child, which I mean, it's our one, you know, that prorated share should probably go to the other. But when it's, when the money is not accrued based on their child, I don't think that we should have to send the money to them, because they're not the accountants, the second county will be like, we have.
So, our students that are residents in Graham County that go to a charter school, that's where we get those, that's where we get that hand.
Yes, yes, and we already pay monthly for the prorated share.
Would this include federal grants?
Everything.
Really?
Yes. Everything will be entered this past, that's what I was.
Now, I did, I did some, just some rough calculations. Now, if we include our state fund, our federal fund, and Fund Eight where we account for grants, you know, those total budgets, right now, all three of those are a little over seventeen million dollars, and if there's a, if you pull at the same rate of about eighty dollars per student per month, what they would be paying from us, instead of seven hundred and ninety dollars per year per student, would be approximately fifteen thousand dollars per year per student, one in the last.
So, we would be paying every month on this grant?
Yes.
They talked about that at the conference, that spring conference, like, you know, for two days, and they went over this like a quiet truth call, and it's, it's egregious and almost is unethical, what they're doing. What money you don't.
I feel like what they choose to do with enroll their child is certainly at the field, but I also understand that charter schools are funded already, so, in a rate that is very generous and is very, as far as the accountability is really, then we have accountability in public schools. So, I, I cannot support sending any additional funds.
If you're saying, I'll need to, as a board, maybe.
This is going for the board, if you choose to sign this, this is, this resolution is our board weighing in to give this to the state, so, that's what it is, so, if you choose to. Oh, it's, I mean, this is, just in one copy, two at the point.
Copy, okay.
If you choose to sign this resolution, that's what this is.
So, we're going to approve it, and you two are going to sign it, just that one?
If that's what you choose.
Okay.
Well, but if it's a way for you as a board to weigh in on your opinion.
That's pretty egregious when that happens, whenever you're voting.
So, we voted on this today?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to oppose House Bill two nineteen by the Graham County school? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Ms. Moody? Child nutrition meal.
Her, her presentation has changed a little bit since.
I'm going to zoom in on you now.
Don't do it like that. So, anyway, in the past years, we have, they qualified for the eligibility provision, CEP, so that's where all your children get to eat for free, and you get reimbursed at the free rate, which is great for my program, that's the highest reimbursement rate for every child. But this year, because, or the coming school year, because they let us use our Medicaid data, this is the first year that North Carolina has let you use what they call Medicaid free, and it comes through your direct SERC system, and the past, we were just able to use our data like on SNAP, children that were food stamp, foster, runaway migrant, or homeless. But this year, we get to include Medicaid data, so we're going to get to do CEP school wide, so everybody.
So, I did put this eligibility worksheet in your board packets for you, just so you can see, to qualify, you gotta have an identified student percentage of forty or greater, and so we're at the elementary school, we were sixty-six point two eight, at the middle school, seventy point five four, and at the high school, sixty-two point eight three percent, which gave us a district average of sixty-six point one five, so we were well above the forty percent this year, but we never have been in the past.
We have three hundred and forty SNAP students and three hundred and eighteen Medicaid free, and that's what has made a difference for us.
So, this program will allow me, the place is set for four years, so there will be no charges for breakfast or lunch for any student in Graham County schools. So, that's for four years, and then we can reapply with the numbers.
That starts.
That starts in August.
That will start next year.
Yeah, so that's, that's huge, and that's, you know, we talked about that, and I said some stuff to Kevin already, but that is some disposable income that can go back into the community, back into those family pockets, that they can use for other necessities that.
Right, and it'll be great for the kids, and it'll help my program, so tremendous.
And we did, and this is not really a very accurate, but just for the purpose of this, if every child in the school ate breakfast and lunch for a year, we're looking at somewhere around a million dollars worth of processes that we're at with now.
In the course of the four years, it would put that much money back into the community, but.
But that's thirty dollars a year.
Yeah, but for me, it would put an extra, you know, two hundred thousand dollars into my program.
And for you as a board, that makes it locally, we're not having a reimbursement program, because usually the child nutrition program, no fault of Ms. Moody's, because she runs that program very well, but just the rising cost and the expenses, we are always having from local money to reimburse child nutrition, it is not a for-profit business, for sure.
And this year has been really bad because the price of food has went up so much, and then we have the Medicaid raises, and then our delivery fee went from two dollars and twenty-five cents a case to six dollars a case.
So, if they bring her a case of styrofoam cups, every case is six something.
I know my delivery fee for tomorrow, just for the elementary, is eight hundred and fourteen dollars, just for them to bring it to the elementary school.
And we're seeing several things with restaurants, and, you know, that's very similar in the food industry right now.
How, how, how hard is it right now to get what you need?
Well, there is some supply chain issues, you never know what kind of hot dogs you're going to get, you never know what kind of chicken you're going to get. We went through, a year before, we couldn't get any paper products, that's why we had to switch back to the hard phrase, you know, the old looking school phrase, which kids love, but you could not get paper products.
So, we in Graham County are part, with other regional, other districts are part of a co-op, so the same thing that Cherokee County, Higginland, all these people, we're all in co-op together, and so we all order from the same places, I mean, there's no, they don't do anything special, you know, in Swang County, you have to order anything that we do, it's the same.
We eat the same food, we're on the same feed all of the surrounding counties.
But we do have a hard time getting things out here, sometimes to people that take bids, like produce bids, it's hard to get produce bid out.
I, I got seven produce bids last year, and only one company responded, and that's Performance Foods, but they responded because they bring things in from restaurants. So, that was the only person that wanted bid on our produce.
Because I'm going to have to come out. I think that's important for the community to know, because the kid goes home and says, you know, we didn't have any jelly this morning, I mean.
Jelly's been wrong this year.
Let the community know, there's no fault of Ms. Moody's or the schools, because it's the supply chain, I mean, that's the problem.
Yeah, it is, and so it's different things, you know, one month, maybe there are cereal, you know, and then we've had issues with jelly, it's just.
Yeah, there are the good things.
Yeah. We have not been able to get our regular pizza all year, so.
And we're talking about the fact that everything has to be, is it wheat?
Oh, we all share.
Yeah, so that's what Ms. Moody's problem is.
And I don't love sweet potatoes, those, I have to put a red or orange on the menu every week, so it's not because I have a thing for sweet potatoes or pendo beans, so, you know what I mean, they have to, you have to have the subrises included in the menu, so.
And I think that's important for the community to know.
So, we are, you know, the community, and maybe let, you know, we've done a, a survey to the students, a survey to the staff, talking about what are the things in the cafeteria that you like, what are the things that you wish we never, ever served again, I mean, not that we can't ever, but, you know, we want them to have that voice, what would make the cafeteria experience better for you, you know, those are the things.
There's a lot of things just out, you know, what may not, you can try.
And, and then we're going to take that, and we're going to try to dispel some of them, yes, we're going to try to do some focus groups with staff and students, and try to share that, and then get them some ownership, and, okay, let's, let's meal plan, because there's certain things that have to go on there, and then let them have some ownership in it, so that we can, we want kids to eat, especially if they're going to be able to eat free, you know.
Well, I would say when, when we were during the COVID thing, in the last, you know, couple of years where they did get to eat free, we did have better participation, we had more children eating. We normally at the elementary served around four hundred or four hundred and twenty breakfast during that period of time, it's now around two eighty or three hundred.
So, so we want to make sure that they're investing in assembly thought taking, which are now.
Thank you, Ms. Moody, that's great news.
Thank you, absolutely. Ms. Knight, personnel, fiscal year twenty-four contracts.
Yes, so, will we, are we going to do a closed session with some contracts, and then we'll be coming out discussing instructional contracts for next school year.
And our later clinic contract reaffirmation.
So, yes, so, and I have, we have some guests. So yes, so and I have, we have some guests in the audience. And Rochelle, would you like introduce yourself and your guests?
Absolutely. I'm Rochelle Phillips. I'm the practice manager for the clinic in the school system. And then I'll let you introduce yourself.
Ken Williams, I'm the compliance manager at the hospital.
And I'm Tori Richards. I'm the nurse practitioner that's supposed to be stationed up here.
So it's time to reaffirm the contract with Arlinger for a school-based health center. I know that particularly, remember, Digital has had some questions. And I thought this was a great opportunity. You have a copy. This is the second time you've received a copy of the contract. But you also have a package and a board packet. I have to say that we have had a very smooth implementation of the school-based health center. This is a model that several school systems have across the state. We have had school-based health center here in the past. We lost that school-based health center years ago, not because it wasn't doing an amazing job, but because we didn't have a provider. We actually had the grant money to continue it. We didn't have a provider. We're very, in my opinion, very privileged now to be able to have a partnership with Arlinger where that we are able to offer our students and our staff and for that matter, staff families, an opportunity to be on campus. What we do for the students is that if we have a student, and all of this is parental permission. So when nobody goes to the clinic unless the parents have been informed and have signed permission. But it gives the parents the opportunity not to have to leave their job to come and take a child to a doctor, or maybe there's an appointment available anywhere in the area. So we provide access to drop on campus for them, for my staff. And it improves their attendance rates because they can just walk down the hall or go to the other campus and be seen and take their own children, their own spouses to be seen. And then they can go back to work if that's the, you know, what needs to happen. So I have been very pleased with it. We, if there's any kind of issue, we're working through that. You know, we've tried to get some billing things worked out. And I think we're making some progress there. And but I have certainly not had anyone come to me with any concerns. And but I would definitely report any comments or concerns you have as we look at reviewing this contract, which I would certainly.
What were you talking about, billing issues? Go back to that.
Well, for a while, I think that, and Rochelle, you might, this is more, you can put it in the language it needs to be put in. So.
Excuse me. So yes, we did have some billing issues in. There were some errors in the billing and some challenges with getting payments from the Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have fixed those issues and they should all be resolved. And if there are any concerns that they're being phoned through the clinic, and then we put them through our, our ESafe is what it's called, through our compliance and risk and.
So you're running them back through?
Yep. We run them back through and then we have individually tried to fix all of them.
So I believe Blue Cross Blue Shield was looking at our clinic as a specialist?
Yes.
And so.
Right.
So it was charging more than it was just a regular clinic?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's when they reassessed it and they thought all that fixed it. And the reason we're looking at.
Yes, ma'am. They, we went through and did a full, or tried to get everybody to get it rebuilt or actually wrote off a lot of the charges. And what that means is we kind of cleared the slate just because it was not the patient's responsibility or fault that they were billing us as a specialty. So we adjusted those or rebuilt them as appropriate. And then if there are any other concerns individually, please call the clinic and we will specifically look at those.
Let me ask you something. I know where you're located there. And I know finding a place for this is really difficult, very difficult. But you do have your folks, you do have a waiting area. And that is located where?
We have waiting, we have a registration area in the, inside of the clinic that will house two people. So if we have somebody in there, we do have some chairs sitting outside if they would like to, just to respect privacy as we're registering a patient.
Okay. And they're sitting outside to wait to be seen because they're sick, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Possibly. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Possibly. We do wellness visits as well.
Okay.
We do kind of checkups. We'll do follow-ups. So if somebody's sick, then we can, you know, follow up and say, see, are you doing better? Is there anything else?
Okay. You were talking about price. And of course, that's in the hall. I was wondering if there's a possibility, and I'm happy to, because just to put a little triangle there.
Absolutely. That is absolutely up to the, to the school system.
We just have to visit right there for the barcode. If you go to the EGRS can with the barcode, we'd have to check that out.
I mean, just, you know, those little triangle things.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it would cost much.
Yep, absolutely.
And it would be very movable. You just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely. We are certainly willing to do anything we can to accommodate.
Because you got kids going down that hall and that's.
I appreciate that. And that's exactly my concern. Is it all right if I speak?
Sure.
All right. I think that the medical clinic is really discussed already by me, how I feel about it. I think it's constitutional issue. It's combining powers. One day, we're really going to understand that. It's centralizing power. You want this thing to be outside of the school. Plus, we don't want to bring in sickness. I mean, doctors' offices and surgeries places, my husband, they don't want us to come sick. There's a reason why. Disease and sickness is passed because someone came in. You wouldn't have sick people over your home. I wouldn't have sick people come into the school. But I like, see, if you could make this thing a little more palatable, I might be able to go along with it. The fact that it's right on the school property in that capacity, right in the building with us. And we have no control over who's coming in. We don't even know what they have. I mean, we're just.
Ms. Tidg, I might say, those kids have been sitting in a classroom all morning. So they're not coming in from the outside. They've already been sitting in a classroom.
But that's what happened to us. We were standing in the hall when I did the tour. The kid was on the outside with a parent and he had a mask on, which already knew there was sickness and disease in the mask. We had this coming on the school property. But I understand this might seem weird to everybody. And I get it. But my part is this, like when you start talking about middle schools and elementary schools and your part, that's your part. My part is I'm trying to stay constitutional and I want to protect kids because the research I show shows sickness and disease is spread, just like we've known since we were little kids. How does sickness and disease spread? Kids are getting around other kids. And that helps what Ms. Knott just said. That does help.
That will help. And they're pretty much secluded. I mean, they're right at the door, where the doors, you know, and it's like it's right in the middle of the school. And the benefits of this is enormous. And I appreciate it so much.
I appreciate it.
So much. Because I know when we had it over at the middle school, it was, and I was teaching, it was wonderful. It was wonderful.
I've never heard of that thing. And believe me, I'd be the person they come to for.
But I think this might, I think this might help. And it will provide some privacy for some, for some folks that are sick or for some folks that are potentially sick. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
We need to keep the school in compliance with state law that requires nursing in the school. And also, there's a new bill, right now, nurses in schools are required to have national certification. It just passed yesterday in the House, one to nine to zero, that schools can now hire nurses with state certification without national certification. It's going to go to the Senate today. They expect it to pass. And it'll become effective immediately. It's mandated for schools to have nurses.
Yes.
Now, do we have.
Anybody who also has nurses, they function separately, but together if needed as a referral to, you know. So, and I know that there's some, ladies in the audience like this thing, but what would you ladies from Arlinger like to share with you, what you like to share with us? Tori, you're there today.
Yes. So I came on in October of 2022. So the clinic was opened September twenty-one? I have to verify the date. So it was open prior to my arrival, but when I transitioned in, I just have to say, I love the community here. I have nothing but, you know, positivity and support. I've been so blessed to get to know these families and, you know, kind of watch these little ones grow and then get to know not only the teachers, but also their families and, you know, just work on, not only from a sick perspective, but also an access to primary care preventative medicine as well. So, and not just in pediatric sense, but also the teachers and their families as well. So it's been really wonderful to be able to provide that wide spectrum of care from, you know, children all the way through, you know, retired teacher members and just having another point of care where people can access that and have, you know, information and other options in our community. Because I know as far as access and schedules and it's, unfortunately, there is a lack of providers in the area. But anything that we can do to help increase that access here and support the school system, we're all for doing. So we're very flexible and just very grateful to be able to help the community and serve in any way we can. Thank you.
I would like to piggyback off that, if I may, for, so we are very blessed with data. We sometimes get saturated with good numbers. And we have a data card that was provided through a partnership for children. And I think this is something that would be beneficial for you to hear. The median family income right now in Graham County, and this is the 2022 report card, but it goes back and it tracks data from years past. The median family income for Graham County was forty-two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Children living in poor or low-income homes was forty-six point five percent. That has an impact on the accessibility for medical and healthcare. Ms. Tidg, you had made a remark, I think it was at the last board meeting, that you can't make a decision unless you're fully informed. So these numbers here today, I hope will have that because it's important for our children. With this same data, we have the remark, many families continue to face increased stressors like job loss, hunger, and untreated health concerns. Traumatic episodes like these are shown to have long-term impacts on children's healthy development. That's what we're, we are charged with, is to make sure that we educate children and that we take care of them to the best of our abilities. We would be remiss if we believed that children do not come to school sick because they do every single day. We also are, under this same data, informed that access to primary care physicians, mental health providers, and dentists is three times in Graham County more difficult to have access to compared to the rest of North Carolina. That is staggering. I'm going to read that one more time. It's three times more difficult for children to have access to care to physicians, mental health providers, and dentists in Graham County. We have forty-two children under the age of eighteen in foster care in 2021. That's a lot of children that need access to services. We have, based on this information under pregnancy and mental health, Graham County is one of the least healthy counties in North Carolina for health factors. We need our school-based health center. And we need the discipline.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got some. So I'd just like to say, another place that this impacts is attendance, especially in high school and probably middle school too. Because a student can go to the school nurse, and if they're sick, all the school nurse can do is send that kid home. That's it. But when the school nurse can call a parent and say, would you like them to see if I can get a appointment to Arlinger Clinic? But they say yes, they can go over, you know, see the physician at the clinic, and they can get prescribed the information they need to get, get better quicker. And that's important for us because we get students back in our schools quicker. Also, it provides a really good service for our athletic department because they do wellness checks. We can do athletics, physicals on school grounds somewhere. And lots of times, a physical goes dead in the middle of a season for a kid. And, you know, suddenly you find that kid's ineligible if they can't get in somewhere. And access is a problem here, you know. So, I mean, I know local clinic, it stays booked all the time. We have urgent care. You have to go up there and sit late. But generally, our kids, we can call and we can get them in that day. Most of the times, we get a physical necessary. So as far as high school, it is a great benefit for us at the high school.
And there's a possibility if the school nurse sends them over there and they find that there's nothing really wrong.
Yes.
They can send them back to class.
Yes.
All day long.
That's right.
Excuse me. That information is in the back of your packet for nurses.
That they get sent back to the classroom.
I will also give you one more statistic for our count of residents. We have four thousand, two hundred and forty residents per one primary care physician. Say it again. Four thousand, two hundred and forty residents per one healthcare physician. We have one thousand and sixty mental health providers for one, one of mental health, let me rephrase that. We have one thousand and sixty members for one mental health provider. That is our numbers for Graham County.
Ms. Kable? I would like to add about children with special needs that we have in our school district. We have a lot with the health problems, seizures, diabetes, different things. And they have been of great access for us, especially even like this school year, when we had children with epilepsy who's had very much difficulty with that. We know that they're in-house and that they can be seen by Arlinger right there on the spot to help us identify and get through those crisis situations. So.
And Ms. Knott, if I could, I would like to speak about the constitutional issue that concerns you. I too can relate with you. I'm a small government fan. I am not, I am not a fan of government overreach and whatever it may look like. And I feel like we live in a very conservative community where most people, regardless of their political affiliation, would say that they had that same view. So to address the constitutionality part, to try to help maybe put your mind at ease about everything, education itself is not mentioned in the Constitution either, other than it's a reserved power. Anything that's not given to the federal government is a reserved power of the states. So because of that, education poses a state reserve power. So if we're worried about a strict reading of the Constitution, education itself is not a part of that, other than just a reserved power of the state. So, but then in talking about freedoms and the way that I'm looking at it and hearing all of these numbers to try to put it in perspective, individuals, adults, students, whomever that comes into the school-based health center, does so of their own free will to choice. Parents have to give permission. Adults have to decide for themselves personally if they're going to do that or if they're going to attend themselves. So it is a freedom of choice for parents and for their students if they choose to participate. They also have the freedom to opt out. So I want you to understand, or I hope that I'm putting in towards things that can help you reconcile that constitutional concern that you have within yourself, that if we're going to speak about freedom, allowing people to have the option to choose to or to choose not to is, in essence, freedom. So I just wanted to kind of put that on your radar as well.
I understand it. I agree. Yeah, I agree with everything you're saying. My concerns still now is even more deeper because I don't like to hear that parents are not here when their children are being assessed. That does.
Only if it's a parent's choice.
Right. It's a parent's choice. But I, my, I'm telling you, this is my area. I'm looking two years down the road. I'm looking five years down the road. I'm not looking that's a day when the kids were sick and came to the clinic and were blessed by this. I know they are. I'm, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I don't hear anything bad. I know it's a blessing. But I'm seeing down the road, and I think that you see down the road, that these kind of things are how we're eroding our rights, that parents' rights are being eroded. And it may not be obvious, but it will become obvious. And that's, that's all I'm representing here. I'm planting the seed or watering somebody else's seed. I totally agree with every single person on this thing. I know it's a blessing and I agree it's a blessing. I just see it as a constitutional thing because we're eroding our rights, we're giving up things we shouldn't, we're centralizing power. It starts somewhere. It starts somewhere. And if we started looking through history, you're going to find what we're doing right here has been done before. So if it's been done before, what was the outcome? You'll have to go look up.
And Ms. Notch, to address what Ms. Notch was discussing about the barrier there for people who are waiting to almost have a little bit of a physical barrier between themselves and the individuals in the hall, um, I think where we ran into an issue before with the doors was the fire code that you were talking about. So if we take, if we don't consider that hallway right there in front of the clinic, but going down toward the art sting room right there, there's that wall where I think there might be maybe even a piece of like a bulletin board or something right there, we could move those trash cans over out of the way and a barrier in a waiting area might could be placed there and it not be an issue with fire code because it's not blocking a door. It would just be in the hallway. So if that's something that the board would want to discuss, uh, for you also, Ms. Ditchell, that could be a possible barrier to try to stop the, the spread of some, anything with somebody that might be sitting there sick.
So the hallway is not considered, anything in the hallway would not be considered a barrier?
I don't know that. I know when they came in to do the fire code, it couldn't be where those main doorways were because there's main doorways on either side. I'm saying if that's the issue of blocking the doorway, if you just went right down that hall on the corner there, you might could have a barrier that could serve as some type of a germ guard, you know, if that would, if that would help. Um, and it may or may not, that would be up to fire code, but because it wouldn't be blocking a doorway, it's, it is an area that could be looked at.
Let me just, I know the question is, I know rooms are tight and me, is, what about, is there any hospital moving traces off of somewhere and using that for a waiting room? Is there anywhere for her to go?
I don't know. I mean, that's something that we could, it depends. It's so hard at the elementary because of my K-3 class size law. Some years I need seven classes for one grade level, some years I need six. And so, I mean, it is something that I wouldn't mind to strategically look at to see if we can make happen, but I still have to kind of shelter some areas because of that class size law.
Are the chairs not considered a barrier? Chairs sitting out there, are they not considered a barrier?
If we had a, like a cubicle up, is that what you're talking about? I'm just talking about.
No, no, that doesn't take, that doesn't leave enough space to work as a barrier. I know what you're saying.
That's up against the law.
Yeah.
Chair against the law. You're talking about a. I don't think I've got anything big and anything covering the whole thing. Not just a, a cubicle corner sort of.
This can walk in.
Yeah, the aggression's eight feet.
So the chair doesn't, if you're about to have.
Oh, well, that would need to become a big deal. We can, we can.
Yeah, we'll look at it. Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yeah, we'll be.
And I know, I know this makes it a problem, not so much in the middle school, like I'm going to get it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Erlanger Clinic contract reaffirmation as we have discussed? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right. Ms. Ditchell, motion to rescind parent involvement policy.
Yeah, I have two. I made that vote in, when was that? February, maybe? August? Okay, February meeting, I approved a packet. I'm calling it the omnibus because in particular, I thought we were going to go through each one of these things and we did it. We did it in like a packet, okay, a file. And I approved things I didn't really want to approve. So I want to rescind my approval. And Ms. Davis is going to answer my questions that I have because I didn't, I didn't really know. I had a lot, you could tell if you were for myself. So we're going to deal with that, but I want to rescind my vote on two policies, thirty-four ten and thirteen ten slash four thousand two, parent involvement and testing and assessment program, the two different things. And if I do that, um, just one on the round, that's it. Is that good, Ms. Davis?
Right, and I'm making a motion to rescind your vote on thirty-four ten and thirteen ten. Just like any other motion, there's a second and a vote.
Okay.
All right, the motion is on the board for Ms. Ditchell to have her vote rescinded on the parent involvement policy. Do I have a second?
For her to rescind her vote.
I know that's confusing. I wonder why she's.
Let's say that again. She made the motion.
Yeah, she's already made the motion.
And she wants to rescind her vote.
Wants to rescind her vote. Now, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
There.
Is that great, Ms. Davis?
Right. It's still passed by the majority.
She's, we say that, her vote, exactly. Her vote is heavier, but it's still passed by the majority.
Yes. And then certainly, sorry about that. I'll do better if you pay attention to that. I just, first, please.
Okay. Board of Policies, Ms. Davis?
There are two on there for second reading. One is the internet safety and Mars here and, um, an emergency passage on that at the March board meeting and it's just, it's on there for the second, um, official proof. And then the other, uh, second read is the random drug testing policy and that was for clarifying procedure. Um, Mr. Diddy recommended, we already did that, so it's on for approval. So the drug test were approved, I was just refreshing remembering, there are emergency on the, the safety, internet safety.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading on policy number thirty-two twenty-six slash forty-two oh five internet safety and possible policy forty-three twenty-six, student random drug testing for athletes and campus parking students? Do I have a second?
So, can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Could I do these separate because the one I'm going to approve and the one I'm not? Random testing, I never agreed with random testing, but I am agreeing with your internet because I thought we, we did that in emergency, that meant it was covered. So you're saying.
It comes on the second time, just a procedure.
Okay, so I'm willing to do that one, but I'm not willing to pass this one.
Do I have a motion to approve policy thirty-two twenty-six slash forty-two oh five internet safety?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve policy forty-three twenty-six, student random drug testing for athletes and campus parking students? So do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes. I have a motion. I've got it. Pursuant to the provision of General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three, to one forty-three, uh, dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses C, I move that the Graham County Board of Education going to closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, appointed for Graham County Board of Education, which advice comes within the review of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues and legal matters pursuant to the provision of the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven C. I look at the Graham County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined and allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C, three twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Notch, action items?
Yes, so I would recommend that you employ Tara Atwell as a child nutrition substitute.
Do I have a motion to employ Tara Atwell as a child nutrition substitute? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
So, Ms. Klein, I will give you a list of these so that you can, we can talk about, okay? Um, I'm going to read a list of one-year contract recommendations and these are mainly for first year or beginning teachers. And the list is Blaine Adams, Michael J. Beasley, Madison Bellinger, Chandler Bowen, Tucker Kay, Crystal Hernandez, Samantha Hooper, Jesse Miller, Mariah Moody, Jacy Rogers, Ashley Satterfield, Michelle Seale, Brittany Snyder, Anna Stewart, Gracie Toomey, and Robin Welber. I recommend you employ them with a one-year contract.
Do I have a motion to approve these one-year contracts for the names that Ms. Notch just written?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Um, I would recommend Gabrielle Pringle Jenkins for a one-year contract. She's a, she's paid under the ESRO grant.
Do I have a motion to approve Gabrielle Pringle, the ESRO, uh, grant? Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, I recommend that you employ Dee Walsh as a part-time PE teacher.
Do I have a motion to approve Dee Walsh as a part-time PE teacher? Do I have a second? Motion denies for lack of a second.
Okay, I recommend the following two-year contracts that end in FY twenty-five for the following five teachers, Rebecca Jones, Farrah Orr, Angela McGuire, Diane Wiggins, and Megan Williams.
Do I have a motion to approve the two-year contract that ends in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend the following four-year contracts that ended FY twenty-seven for the following teachers, Amanda Daniel, Carla Jones, Sabrina Lane, Mara Lynn Lynn, Miranda McKinnon, April Orr, Ramona Sosby, and Keela Stewart.
Do I have a motion to approve the four-year contract that ends in fiscal year twenty-seven?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend a four-year contract for Cullen McKinnon as a tech specialist and an AIG director.
You want them individual?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, uh, technical director Cullen McKinnon? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend a four-year contract for Christy Cable as federal programs and exceptional children director.
Do I have a motion to approve Christy Cable as EC director?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend that you approve Jamie Hooper as principal for a four-year contract.
Do I have a motion to approve Jamie Hooper as principal?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Warren Na as assistant principal with a four-year contract. Chairman Nelson, um, I need to let you know that he is my son and you need to vote whether or not to take that.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Notch to vote on her son?
I'll second that. Or I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. So Ms. Notch, you have approval from the board.
Thank you.
To vote. Do I have a motion to approve Warren Na as assistant principal at the elementary school?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Um, I recommend Tanya Walsh for a four-year contract as a principal.
Do I have a motion to approve Tanya Walsh, uh, with a four-year contract, uh, as principal of the middle school?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Is that it?
That's all the question part I have.
Okay, you go ahead.
So, yes, so there's board training on May second at eight AM. Ms. Davis will have something exhilarating ready for you by then. Um, next board meeting will be May second at ten AM for regular board meeting. Uh, I will draw your attention to in your packets, you have a list of upcoming events. Uh, some of those the principals have shared with you, but then there are some other dates. As you look through there, there are four things that have an asterisk by them. I need you to decide whether or not you'll be able to attend those four events because we need to arrange seating for those events, uh, for the academic banquet, the athletic banquet, baccalaureate, and high school graduation. If you will let Ms. Klein know whether or not you'll be there because that's how we arrange seats for those events. Now, so if you need to let her know the next day or so, that's fine. We would like to know that within the next week so that we can have plans. I know it's going to be rather.
Okay, so yeah. Do I have a motion to close, close session? I mean, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are now adjourned.